Good evening. I'm going to call to order the council meeting for August 6, 2018, in City Council chambers. Please stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The councilperson Ellis is going to do the honors.
Let us pray. Gracious and merciful God, we come once again to be of service to you. Lord, we ask for your blessings as we go about trying to do what is best for the people of this city. Lord, bless each and every council person here. Bless each and every one that's in this council chambers. Bless each one of our firefighters. Bless each one of our police officers. Bless all the people that serve in the city of Jeffersonville. And, Lord, give us strength to do your will and not our will. Guide us, strengthen us, and love us. We ask this in the precious name of Jesus Christ, our Lord, our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Obedience to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Row. Row call, please. Yes, councilperson White. Councilperson Stoudamire.
Precious.
Councilperson Yon. Present. Councilperson Maples.
Here.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Here.
Councilperson Gill. Here. Councilperson Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Here.
Councilperson Samuel.
Here.
Let the record reflect all nine council members are present. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes of our council regular proceedings of June 16, 2018.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Claims to be approved. Civil City first.
Claims tonight are $2,896,997.47.
Heather, on page 14, it's under the Police Nonreverting Fund. It's the furniture for narcotics for the $10,000. Can you just double check and make sure, since that's a nonreverting fund, that that expenditure can come out of there? I'm pretty sure.
I'll check and make sure.
You know how our nonreverting, only certain things can come out of it. And then, as you know, on page 13, that early pay of the $400,000, I'm just letting you know, I don't support how that was handled. So that's all I had.
Comment, I guess. I agree with what you just said on page 13. And I'd make a motion that we pull that out and vote on that separately.
Okay. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
I got a motion and a second to vote on the $400,000 for the refund reimbursement. So is there any further discussion or question?
We're voting to pull that aside.
Pull it aside, yes.
Then vote on it separately.
We can vote on it by itself.
I just have a quick question. Was a check already cut?
Yes.
Has it been cashed?
I'm not sure of that.
Seeing all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll do that. So I will entertain first a motion to approve the claims. How would you pull that out and sign for the claims, though?
I mean, you can't unless they can produce the document before the end of the meeting.
I can go and check at the bank. I mean, I'd have to pull it up at the bank, see if the check's been cashed.
The fact is, the check's been cut, so it doesn't matter if it's been cashed as of today or not.
Oh, is redevelopment reimbursing that?
Yes.
Well, we wasn't told that redevelopment was reimbursing it.
That's already been deposited in the account.
Why wouldn't redevelopment just cut the check then? Why didn't it go through this process?
Because it was originally put into that fund. We'd have to reimburse it out of that fund.
Just the money for Papa Jones?
Yes.
Row.
We vote on it separately?
So we're just voting to take the money out of that fund to go back to where it was.
That fund is now held.
Yeah.
Clarification. My understanding was that the original amount was deposited into redevelopment.
No.
And you're saying it was deposited in their general fund originally?
No, it was deposited into the Nahan Fieldhouse Fund.
I brought it because I didn't support the procedure. The check was issued and nailed out that day without, and it was under an account that is under the Civil City. We had nothing to do with redevelopment. I wasn't notified. I think the claim, we had a Monday meeting. The claim should have come to us hand carried, or we could have called a special meeting. I just don't like the fact that a check was asked to be cut and was cut and was early paid. That's just my opinion. So all those in, I don't know what to do. All those in favor signify by saying aye about pulling the $400,000 out of the claims. If you want to leave it in.
Security vote.
We voted on that?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize we did it. Okay.
But there's no way to vote on that separately and sign a claims list unless they can produce an amended claims list.
Well, let's go on, and I'll take a motion to approve.
Can't we just approve this and then add it to the claims list after? And then take another vote?
Well, the motion passed and removed the $400,000. So let's take a motion to approve the claims of, well, it'd be $2,496,977.47.
Point of objection? I made the motion. Can I withdraw my motion?
It's already been voted on.
It's already been voted on.
Can make a motion to add it back.
Make a motion to add it back on the claims.
Yeah, we can do that, because we didn't take a motion to...
And just a comment. The reason I did that is, there's a check in balance. Whether I agree or not with what was done with the Nahan Fieldhouse, that has nothing to do with this. But I don't think the executive should be able to just say, "Cut a check" without an invoice and without talking to the council. And it happened. And I just want to say that's...
Well, I can't, I can't say...
What reporters do you do with all the reporters about that? You know, it was not a very easy decision. Reporters, we can't run the city by committee. Decision had to be made very quickly, as all other institutions have.
But, sure. And you could say, "We're going to repay it," but don't cut the check. Just call a meeting and cut the check. That's just not the law. It's not the law.
To clarify, the finances of this city are run by committee. It's this committee.
Well, I can't, I can't sit here as president of the county and go through these, which I called out, and early pay for a computer. It goes against our ordinance. So I can't sit here as president of the council and condone prepayment of $400,000 without the fiscal body knowing about it or a chance to take action on that. So that's all I'm going to say on that.
I'll make a motion to add the $400,000 back in.
Okay. So I have a second. Got a motion, second, add the $400,000 back in. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, now, I will entertain a motion for the full amount of the claims.
We approve the claims.
I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the claims of $2,896,997.47. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Parks.
Parks are $280,348.37.
Yeah, I do have a couple questions. On page five, the $450 for sounds unlimited, did that have the right appropriation number for that?
No, that was changed to the pool.
Okay. The pool on that, or did you just change the appropriation?
Just changed the appropriation number, yes.
And does she have the right one for us to sign?
I can get it to her.
Okay. And then, the, I lost my post. It's off of here. But Dave Simpson, we need the account receivable receipt on his claim for $4,400. I have that. Okay, great. And did you get the signed contract for the River Stage?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, that's all I had.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do you have page five?
I can get to you in a moment.
Thank you, Heather. Reporter, the clerk.
Just a quick second. I'm making a next on that page, so. Couple of things. First of all, the new chair should be in by the next council meeting for you all. Council chairs, a little bit more comfortable, a little bit more rollable.
They'll fit under here.
They'll fit underneath here. We did the equipment. It's been, they're ordering it. We do have the laptop. And Patsy worked with Logan this past week. There's one glitch left in it that we have to get. But we do have the laptop. And then, when I find out that the rest of the equipment's coming in, I will order the other items left to be owned. Also, I sent you all an email with the clerk's salary policy and pay grades. And I guess, Mr. Walther, would I need just approval from them, or just nothing?
Under the statute, that's all. So we talked about this. The clerk is autonomous, created by statute. So your role with the clerk's office is to oversee the finances.
Yeah, no.
So should we just make a motion to accept that policy in the minutes? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Vicki, especially for handling ordering the chairs and getting everything done. So we'll move on to your business. Heather, we've got the 2018 OR 43, an ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department that did pass in first and second. Any changes?
No changes.
And I'll entertain a third and final motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve 2018 OR 43 in a third and final. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Heather, we have the 2018 OR 44, an ordinance for additional appropriation. It did pass in the first and second. Has anything changed?
No.
Does, I don't have that in front of me. Does council have any questions before I open up for public hearing? At this time, I'm going to officially open up public hearing on the additional appropriation that is behind us. If there's anybody here to wish to speak for or against us, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, officially closed public hearing, and I will entertain a motion for third and final.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 44 in third and final. Any further discussion?
Yeah, there's something that I would like to say about this. I know we appropriated an additional $2,130 from the Parks Department. And for the removal of the invasive species, and, but then, at the last Parks Authority meeting, they still had enough money available to buy a new lawnmower for $15,000. So as usual, I'm back to the same place that I'm used, that I used there. And I don't believe in these additional appropriations, as long as there's money left in the budget that they can spend within that budget. And I will be voting no on this.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Heather. New business, we got Mr. Merkley, the ordinance changing the zoning map designation of a certain tract of property located at 1417 Old Salem Road, fully described and attached to it A, going from an R1 to a C2.
This comes to the council with a favorable recommendation to rezone this property. It's currently R1. And we've had some discussions since the redevelopment meeting. There were some issues that were, not the redevelopment, the Planning Commission meeting. There were some issues as to the use of this property down the road. We have had discussions with the property owner and the applicant Gilmore Construction, and we believe we've resolved some of those issues. At some point, we want this to be a PUD development. But to be a PUD development, under our zoning code, it needs to be rezoned to the underlying zoning classification for that PUD, which in this case, in this case, is C2. Unfortunately, the ideal situation would be, this would be zoned multi-use. We do not have that under our zoning code. All we have is the PUD. What we have been able to do is that the property owner, the applicant Gilmore Construction, has agreed to execute a zoning commitment that will be recorded with the property. And basically, the crux of it is, is that there will be no development or building on the property until and if they receive the rezoning to the PD C2, to a PUD. So that gives us another layer of control. So at some point, the property will be developed, but it'll be developed as a PUD. And it will have to go back in front of the Planning Commission and back in front of the council when it is zoned a PUD, along with a development plan. So I think...
Since that's going on the deed, then we don't do a contingent upon motion, then? We're fine to move, approve this as a...
I would go ahead and rezonate contingent upon the zoning commitment being filed. And my office will make sure it gets filed, assuming it's rezoned. This is a public hearing. I believe Mr. Pfeiffer is here filling in for Mr. Applegate, who is the attorney representing Gilmore. If there's any questions or if I've left anything out.
Mr. Merkley, excuse me just a second. Will I need a copy of that agreement to go with this ordinance?
All I have is, the attorneys gave me the original. I can get you a copy for the record.
Okay. Just to touch upon that. Does council have any questions before I open up public hearing?
So, so the restriction on the properties for the rezoning is that it can't be developed C2 until it's been approved as a PUD.
Yes.
So if we approve this, and a PUD is never agreed upon, it's never going to be developed.
It's this, this paragraph, this is the crux of it. Prior to filing for a building permit with the City of Jeffersonville Building Commission, for any portion of the property, developer will file an application with the Planning Commission to rezone the property from a C2 district to a classification to a planned development district PD slash two, PD dash C2 classification. The foregoing commitment shall apply to a condition precedent to building permits only. Nothing contained in here shall be deemed to a condition precedent developers' application receipt, land distribution, improvement of location, drainage, electrical or building permits, loan retains of building permits. They can't build until it's rezoned to a PUD.
Interesting.
And the applicant agreed to that on the...
Yes. Yeah, they've executed, they've signed it.
Are you wondering what the course of action would be if the PUD is not approved?
I'm sorry?
Are you wondering what the plan of action would be if the PUD is not approved?
Yeah, that's a big, as a property owner, I think that's a big risk.
I don't represent the property owner.
I understand. Is this the property where the heavy haul road comes through?
It's near, it depends on the route.
I got you.
It's, there's various routes.
The elusive route.
Yes.
Any further questions? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open up public hearing. If there's anyone to wish to speak for or against the rezon for 1417 Old Salem Road from an R1 to a C2, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, ma'am. Brett Benson, on behalf of Gilmore Construction with Applegate Fire and Pooling, I'm just here in case you all have any questions for me. I've got some slides. We can go through them. And a little bit more if you'd like. Just wanted to offer it up to you all, whatever you'd like to do.
Seeing nobody from the public, I'm going to officially close public hearing. Does anybody have any questions or want to take them up on his offer? Or are you ready to make a motion? Remember, it needs to be contingent upon Mr. Merkley filing the...
Do you have an ordinance number?
Uh huh.
45.
I'll make a motion to pass 2018 OR 45 with the contingency expressed by Mr. Merkley.
One second.
We got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 45 with the contingency of Mr. Merkley filing and all the paperwork, his office handling, all of that. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Merkley, you're up again for an ordinance changing the zoning map designation of a certain tract of property located at 3604 3818 East 10th Street from a C2 to a C2 PD.
This is another rezoning matter that's coming, let me find this, we have it several here.
C2 to a PUD.
Oh, this is the property that is across the street on 10th Street from the new Kroger property that is owned by KDC Development LLC. And it is currently zoned commercial, C2. And they are just rezoning. They have created a PUD, which again, was given a favorable recommendation to you all from the Planning Commission.
Does council have any questions before I open up public hearing? Seeing none, at this time, I'm going to officially open up public hearing. If there's anyone here to speak for or against the rezon for the property located at 3604 3818 East 10th Street, going from a C2 to a C2 PD PUD.
Kelly Jones, State Back Listen and Lingo. I'm just here if you have any questions. I have most of the same stuff that I presented at the Planning Commission. Here is the representative for KDC, happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Does anybody from the public wish to speak? Then I'm officially closed public hearing. Council, do you have any questions for the representative?
Make a motion per 2018 OR 46.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 46. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We'll move right on into the ordinance changing the zoning map designation of a certain tract of property located at 3207 Cooper's Lane from a C2 to an R1.
Again, a favorable recommendation. This is a large, I believe this is a large tract of land, which an individual is wanting to be able to build, if I'm correct, a single family residence on this property.
Council have any questions? At this time, I'm going to open up public hearing for the property located at 3207 Cooper's Lane, where its zoning request changed from C2 to an R1. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak for or against? Seeing none, I'll officially close public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 47. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We got the Homeless Coalition update, but I did not see Keely here. Is there anybody here to give a Homeless Coalition update? Okay. Then I will table that, or go on from that. Larry, we've got a resolution approving the City Jeffersonville Waste Water Treatment System, 2018-2025 Capital Improvement Plan.
You all received the proposed ordinance that establishes a nonreverting fund for the 8th Street Stormwater Separation Project. And what that does is it sets aside and creates a fund where the, any money that you want to budget into that particular fund would be placed, and it would only be used for the specific projects that have been presented for that specific 8th Street Stormwater Separation Project, and nothing else. And I think that that was an effort to try to move along some of the needs and interest in the litigation that's pending against the city and has been pending since I was just a young man. As long as it took to build the bridge.
Longer.
Longer.
What would the resolution number be for this? Seven?
It's a nonbinding resolution, right?
I'm not certain. The money could not be spent for anything that is not specifically within the 8th Street Stormwater Separation Project and nonreverting fund, which would mean any money that you put in there, that's all it could be used for.
Right now, we're talking about...
We're not talking about that resolution. This is just the capital plan.
I'm sorry. I got a, what a hit on. Capital plan is what we're going to vote on before we get to the nonreverting fund. I'm sorry.
That's right.
And that's the information that was provided to us at the executive session.
It's a nonbinding resolution.
It is a nonbinding resolution, correct?
Yes, this is accepting the plan so they can move forward with their negotiations with EPA and...
Correct.
If you don't have any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to pass 2018 R7.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 7. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Excuse me.
That's '07. The next one will be '08. I'm sorry.
No.
Nope.
No, this is a resolution.
Resolution, not an ordinance.
Gotcha.
R7. That's one number?
Hold on a second. Yeah, never mind. I'm sorry.
Is the resolution number seven that you gave correct?
Yes, I'm sorry. I've had two of them here, and I was trying to figure out which one of them.
Then our motion is...
Yes.
Okay. Did I take it to a vote? It's not...
Uh huh.
Okay. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Larry, well, now we'll go into the ordinance establishing the 8th Street Stormwater Separation Project Nonreverting Fund.
Here is the horse that I got in front of the car backwards. Yes, this is the fund.
It's just established fund?
Correct, yes.
This is number 47?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, sorry.
And I did ask Lynn Ashack and Dale Warham to be here, because I know that if anybody has any questions on the 8th Street project, or any questions that we need to answer, they're here in the back. Okay, nobody has any questions, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve 2018 OR 48 on the first and second.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 48 in the first and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we will move on to Heather. We got the 2017 Top 20 Salary and Top 40 Vendors.
I didn't hear anyone from, anything, anything from anyone, so...
That's not true. I emailed you, thought it looked great.
I didn't get that. It must have went to my, I really didn't.
Really?
I didn't.
I tell you, I have had problems with my email, but I did respond. Thank you. Actually, it was even more than what was requested, because you gave a list, I don't know, 100.
Yeah.
Yeah. So thank you for doing that.
Well, if I, if I got your intentions correct, I hope.
Looks great. Thank you.
Thank you. And I need a motion to...
Put it into the record?
Yes.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Heather, you're still up. You're on a roll here. You got a ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department, which would be ordinance 49.
We have one from the Parks Department moving from equipment to repair and maintenance. Sanitation would be moving from cleaning supplies to water utility. And from safety, from equipment to safety supplies.
Was that water utility to pay a bill? Do they not have enough money budgeted, or that water utility, is that for, what is that for? Is that to pay?
Just to pay the water bill. I'm not sure.
Do you make a note of that, that they...
Right.
Their budget for next year. Does council have any questions? Now I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
For what?
Sorry, first and second.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 49 in the first and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Seeing none, all those in favor saying if I was saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Heather, we got an ordinance of additional appropriation out, two thousand eighteen OR fifty.
The first one is for the dredging and, from the engineering department. And then the last four for the new ordinance and transfer into there. I mistyped on there, it shouldn't be one million, one point five, it should just be one for the improvement, so...
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask you, that's, didn't add it, I was wondering where that happened, a thousand for, okay, so we need to switch, change that.
So, if you want to approve this at the one million for that, then we'll, I can change the ordinance for the next meeting.
Okay, that'll be fine. Got any questions? And I'm assuming we'll have the public hearing in our next meeting, has it been advertised?
Yes.
So, just to be clear, we're transferring out seven fifty from General and Edit into the new, newly established Eighth Street?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I just have a comment. I think that, I think that if we're gonna start taking general fund dollars and edit dollars and putting them into storm sewer projects, it's probably, we're probably moving a little bit too late on...
It's a one-time thing.
Right. But I, you know, I think that we could have probably been doing this before. The only comment I would have is, I think that the council should get more of a regular update on the finances of the sewer department. If we're gonna start directly pumping tax dollars into the sewer utility beyond the excessive user fees that we already, you know, impose on our ratepayers. Not saying that the, the system doesn't need it, but we need some accountability of where these dollars are going on a much more regular basis. Because the council doesn't, as a councilman, I've never seen any type of operational budget for the sewer department other than some of the capital projects that we've approved. And I think that's necessary, and I think it's, the taxpayers are owed that.
Easy report to print, we, we have it at the sewer board meeting every time, too.
I just wanna say that I've expressed my, at the, well, I think that there are four million dollars worth of projects that are not scheduled to start now or next year, that could be started maybe a year later and some of the funds that are dedicated to those projects could be used for this Eighth Street project. And I think, as I mentioned, we have high sewer rates now and I think it's appropriate to, when you're nearly a hundred million dollars in debt, to find the proper ways to use that, is to satisfy the needs, the urgent needs that we have. There's some other things that we can do to solve the problems we have and some other avenues that can be taken which have not been taken. So, I'm not in support of this appropriation this time. This project is not to start this year or next year. If there's going to be a design, then there's funds within the sewer utility to fund those designs or that design. I think this is a premature appropriation when we have other needs that are pressing as well, for example, with respect to our fire department on the eastern part of town. So, I don't think this is being fiscally responsible by appropriating this money to this, for this project into this fund at this time. And so I'll be voting against it. I would encourage other council persons to do the same.
Lynn, did you wanna address anything? Did you hear everything? I, I think it's important for, to express to the, the council, the plan that you have that you wanna take to the EPA and to Department of Justice and why having this money in place for this project is important to the sewer board.
Well, we can have the money in place without getting it from the general fund or Edit. That's my point.
We have money, the sewer rates are the highest in, anyway, most of the state of Indiana. We have a burden to prove to EPA that raising the rates beyond what they are and complying with the construct, design and construction of the interceptor that will eliminate if not, will reduce if not eliminate some of the CSOs that go to the Ohio River untreated would cause an undue financial burden on the ratepayers. We came up with that CIP list after months of bantering back and forth between stormwater and myself and sewer board on what projects are fundable and what, how we're gonna pay for those projects. We've already got a hundred million dollars bonded to build the North wastewater treatment plant, to expand the downtown plant, to build the Tenth Street lift station, to rebuild Spring Street, Mill Creek and Lencier Creek lift stations, plus ten, fifteen years of neglecting the collection system, that nothing was done to maintain that system since it was under the operation of the contract, of the contract operator. There was a lot of things to make up. If you remember the old Fram commercials, pay me now or pay me later, well, it's later. And if we don't do something to keep EPA reasonably satisfied, then we could end up like New Albany. You know how difficult it is for New Albany to build anything without EPA saying, yeah, go ahead and do it? So, this project, we're trying to downsize the size of the interceptor on Chestnut Street from a eighty-four inch to a sixty-inch and to downsize the interceptor that goes from Wall and Chestnut to Tenth Street from a ten-by-eight box, which is a pretty good-sized box in the ground, to a seventy-two inch sewer. And in, in return, we're gonna do additional improvements to the treatment plant to provide additional wet weather treatment of the untreated combined sewers that would normally go to Kane Run. And these projects are the minimum. You've got probably two billion dollars worth of investment in the ground, both treatment plants and all the sewers, you've got a hundred and three miles of sewers in the ground, some of which, some of which was put in long before records were kept. The original interceptor that's in the ground running from Pearl, no, running from Market and Mulberry to, to the Tenth Street Lift Station through various routes underneath a building, as a matter of fact, was put in in nineteen fifty-three. Nothing was done to it since nineteen fifty-three. It's the same sewer that was put in the ground seventy years ago, or close to seventy years ago, sixty-five years ago. So, these projects need to be funded and we can't, we can't raise the rates to the citizens of Jeffersonville anymore than they already are, because it's really undue hardship. But proving that to the federal government's almost next to impossible.
And Lynn, I think it's important, too, for the council and the public to know, how long has Diana Hamilton of Sycamore been going over the finances of the sewer board, the drainage board and of the, the city to, and finally came, we, I know, I've been involved for over two years of the executive sessions, to finally come up with a plan that does not increase sewer rates?
We submitted the first financial capability assessment, which is what the federal government requires, to show an undue hardship back in two thousand sixteen. And we started this, before we, we submitted that report in, in September of two thousand sixteen and it's been, it was six months at least before that, that we had Diana Hamilton involved to look through our finances, to find out what we can afford, what we can't afford. And we don't want the federal government to come into the city of Jefferson and say, hey, your rates aren't high enough, you gotta raise them again to fund these projects. Because back in two thousand and nine, we submitted a long-term control plan to the federal government that said we were gonna spend thirty-three million dollars on an, on that interceptor, which was a varying-sized pipes on Market Street and a twelve-foot sewer going from Market and Mulberry to Tenth Street. The price of that project today is over fifty million dollars. So, it's increased seventeen million dollars by, just because of, just because of what's happening in Jeffersonville and Clark County as a whole. We can't get people to bid on things, because they're just too damn busy building other things for developers and for subdivisions. There's, is, is Jeffersonville gonna be the same way it is five years from now? Probably not. But you can't, you can't estimate things in the future, because you can't, you gotta be conservative in your approach to things. So, that's, based on her financial assessment of the, of the sewer utility, this is the plan we came up with and, and she put together this, this funding plan, having the city council contribute money to subsidize the projects so we don't have to raise sewer rates, to keep the drainage fees as they are, to keep the sewer bills as they are. So, I mean, we've been working at this, I've been working at this since two thousand and six, whether I was a city employee or not, I've been, was involved as, as a consultant. So, I'm, I've got twelve years involved in this. And it's not easier, any easier today than it was back in two thousand and six when we started this whole thing, so...
And it's important for us to plead our case to the EPA and Department of Justice, so they can easily say, you're gonna follow your originally agreed-upon, that's already in place EPA mandate, correct?
That's what they said in the meeting we had with them, April the tenth, at the downtown, at the north treatment plant. And Ron was there and Nathan was there and they were pretty much insistent, saying, you've gotta prove financial burden, otherwise you've gotta do what you said you're gonna do, which is fifteen million dollars, plus we got other projects to do. If we don't take care of the flooding on Eighth and, on Eighth Street from Walnut to, to Cherry Streets, you know, this, this, the flooding problem over there has been historic for years. And that sewer on Eighth Street's taking in a lot of water and we gotta treat that water. If we don't treat it, it goes out to Kane Run. And we got Clarksville that's kinda getting impatient with the city of Jefferson as a whole. So, and as far as finances, I mean, if you wanna see finances, we've got a budget, we started the budget process in fourteen, we've had a budget every year that's been voted on and been distributed to the sewer board, at least it gets a copy of this, a copy of it. So, we're not doing anything that's, that people don't know about if you choose to, to wanna know about it. So, if there's any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Anybody have any other questions? Then I'll take...
As I said before, we were told in the past, if we didn't do the canal project, that we would be fined and we'd have a rate increase and a ban on development if we didn't pass that. And that didn't happen, and we don't have any fines.
They can't, yeah?
I'm sorry, we, we weren't fined, we didn't have a ban, we didn't have to raise our rates. There are four million dollars in projects that are scheduled to be done in the future, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, that are funded, where those funds can be used for the Eighth Street project and we can find funds for those projects down the road and still include them in the plan. We won't have to raise rates. We can also put together a team and talk to our congressman, see if we can get some help, EPA, and maybe have a team to go speak with the governor with respect to our phosphorus issue. Apparently, can get an extension on that, so maybe we can try to work something on that. We're not doing that. Just taking the taxpayers' dollars after making them pay high sewer rates, using more money to plug this apparent hole that I don't think really exists. This is it.
Lynn...
The house is not on fire.
He said that we haven't got any fines or anything for not doing, for not doing the canal. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that because we have a deadline to get all this stuff done and if we get it all done by that deadline, if we don't get it done by that, then we'll start being, or how does that work? Because he did, he brought that up.
There was, in the long-term control plan, there was a schedule of projects, when they were getting completed, completed and what the drop dead date was. In the consent decree, there was stipulated penalties from missing deadlines. The stipulated penalties are at the pleasure of EPA. They can say, you missed your deadline, by these many days, you owe us this much money. We have not been in compliance with the deadlines. We have to have the long-term control plan projects done by June first of two thousand twenty-five. We gotta be in compliance with the interceptor in place and a reduction of our CSOs to the Ohio River and Kane Run to two, one every six months to the Ohio River and three in a count, in a typical year to Kane Run. Our, our proposed projects are gonna reduce the volume of CSOs to the Ohio River and Kane Run by four-point-three million gallons a year from what it is, what it is today, from what the long-term control plan said it was gonna have as far as volume of water. Now, does it, does our CSOs affect the Ohio River? You be the judge. I mean, there's a billion gallons of water going out to the Ohio River and we discharge maybe a million, so it's a, you know, a hundred thousand to one dilution ratio, but it's still a discharge. So, and we did get fined in our civil penalty, in our consent decree. We paid a civil penalty to the federal government, we paid a civil penalty to IDAM. We did two SEPS.
For what?
For violation of the, of the Clean Water Act, by having untreated CSOs go to the Ohio River and the Kane Run, that's what we paid.
When did that happen?
Back in two thousand and ten.
Oh, okay.
And there's stipulated penalties in the consent decree, when you miss the schedule, you pay a certain amount for one to thirty days, thirty to sixty days, sixty to ninety days, there's different amounts based on the, on the, on the penalty. If I violate the FLO limits of our treatment plant, there's a stipulated penalty for that. If I didn't eliminate bypasses and overflows from the three CSO, combined, three sanitary sewer overflow, Spring Street, Mill Creek and Arctic Springs, there were stipulated penalties for that, for not developing a, a long-term control plan, there were stipulated penalties for that, for not developing a CMON program, there were stipulated penalties for that. So, just because they haven't fined us doesn't mean that not, they're not there. That's at their pleasure, they chose not to fine us, but they can. So, if, if things don't go well with them in the next few weeks, we will see what happens. As far as talking to our congressman, yes, we've, we've been determined that this is paralysis by analysis. And so we have gone to Senator Young to try to get this operation moving in the EPA. We have been waiting basically for four weeks, for four questions from the EPA. Lynn got three of those yesterday, or Friday, and answered them this morning. And so it's, yes, this morning. So, you just, it's, it's death-defying to try to move people off of a dime. And we, you won't believe what this man has done with the help of engineers and everybody else to try to move this city forward. And if we don't do this, you can kiss downtown development goodbye, because that Mulberry interceptor, it's a twenty-one inch pipe that's two-thirds full in dry weather. If we don't get the volumes off of that by separating these things on Eighth Street and by moving these projects along, we can say no to all of these apartment projects in downtown, because we have no pipes to carry it. And you throw in washers and dryers in five hundred apartments? There's no way the Mulberry interceptor can handle this. So, we've got to do all of these things. Do we want to do them? No. Do we have to do them? Yes. And the operator can help everybody, because I think we figured, what, eighty-six billion gallon of water a day go down that Ohio River? And when you start figuring out what we put in, it's point zero zero one five.
Percent.
Percent, yes. But that's what Washington wants, so you have no choice in this matter. You really don't. When the man sits there and Lisa and others were sitting there, when he says, well, volume doesn't count, you gotta get your numbers down on overflows, it's ludicrous, but that's his opinion, he's with the Department of Justice. I'll be glad to answer any questions you want, but we have come a one million miles from where we were in two thousand and nine. One million miles, not one mile. You have to understand where our finances have come from. I mean, we were four months away from bankruptcy in oh nine and ten. Today, we're not. We've done a lot of work and, tell you the truth, pretty darn proud of it. And so, we're just asking for your help. I think New Albany...
I think New Albany finally this year, for the first time, did not give the Sewer Department $720,000, which they have been doing for 20 years. They finally stopped this year. So all we're asking is help us not raise rates. That's what we're trying to do, is not raise rates. People are paying enough. So appreciate your help. I'll be glad to answer any questions to my head.
Does anybody have any questions, either Lynn or for Dale?
I'll just reiterate. No one is saying not to do the long-term control plan. We weren't fined since 2011 when we were told that we would, couldn't do any more development if we didn't do the canal, we didn't have to raise our rates. Nothing has been addressed here, refuse anything I've said. And again, there are projects on this plan that are funded that start far enough in the future that do not, well, we asked, I asked the question, which one of these projects directly affects the project to satisfy the consent decree? And I didn't get a, we didn't get a clear answer on that. But if the Eighth Street project is one of the key want, key projects, then some of the other projects that are funded don't need to be funded now because they start in the future. Apparently this, well, so does the Eighth Street project. So we could, and some of the projects in this long-term control plan are not funded, according to what we were told. So again, I don't think we should be using money out of the Edit or the General Fund. I think some of the money from the Drainage Fund and from the various resources that the Sewer Department has, including the bond, could be used to pay for this project. At a minimum for the design at this point. They should have the money for that. So nothing.
All or.
We haven't talked to Todd Young, or, I'm sorry, we haven't spoken to Congressman Hollingsworth about this. I don't know what kind of questions are being answered, but I don't know if the question was asked whether or not we could get relief specifically from the consent decree or not. But I think these things can be asked and we can move down that path. But anyway, I'm not saying not to approve these projects, saying that we shouldn't be paying for it with taxpayer dollars from the Edit and the General Fund.
We have approached, as I told you, Senator Young. He has a gentleman in Washington that handles these EPA and Department of Justice problems. He's helped Evansville and others. It is a very simple thing of trying to move the EPA and the Department of Justice off of the dime so that we can move forward with these projects and meet the 2025 deadline that they have. And so money is a rare thing and we have to meet this burden of proof on our household income. And two means we can raise rates. Three means we're a heavy burden community. We are trying to meet that three or above to prove that we are a high burden community and that we cannot raise rates any further. So we're asking for your help and.
I guess my question is, did we ask them to extend that deadline? Have we, did we ask the senator to help us to extend that deadline?
Originally, we went to them with a proposal to extend it 10 years.
To Todd Young?
Not to Todd Young, to the EPA and Department of Justice. They simply said no. So that's, you know, if you, if you want to beat your head against that wall, then try going against the EPA and the DOJ.
You can't go through that federal court order.
Yeah.
They can help us with negotiations.
That's what.
And that's what we're doing now, we're trying to negotiate to get out of that original.
We're trying to avoid paralysis by analysis.
Our, our goal is to get approval for this adjusted proposal that we're planning, which ultimately is better for us because it's significantly less money. And part of getting that approval and what was recommended to us from an advisor is that we have buy-in from different entities within the city saying, "Yes, we are committed to this plan." And, and it also ties into the burden, financial burden that you're referring to. So, and, and also that the projects were placed and prioritized with great care in terms of what needs to be done first. And, and that's why there's different time ranges, all of them being completed before 2025.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
But all these are not from the consent decree, right? For example, like the Worley Road, Stormwater Detention Jason.
The consent decree has projects, mostly the long-term control plan, but there is also a part in the, in the long-term, in the, long-term, well, consent decree.
Specifically, is the Worley Road project.
That was added by Drain.
No, I mean, but does that have any effect on the consent decree?
No, but it goes to, goes to proving there's a financial burden to run a stormwater and wastewater program in the City of Jefferson.
They wanted to see the list of projects and the price tag attached to them because we have to prove our burden of debt. That's why they have to.
And that we're willing to invest in our stormwater.
Right. And the Eighth, Eighth Street project, we pitched the Eighth Street project to, all of them up in Indianapolis. We had EPA Region 5, EPA from Washington, Department of Justice, all of IDAM was there. And the EPA and the Department of Justice was very happy with this Eighth Street plan because not only did it take care of failing infrastructure, it took care of all the flooding that the citizen, we just had a couple that came into the Drainage Board, the last Drainage Board, meaning about the, this project will fix that drainage issue. They've been waiting to get their drainage issues fixed. But most importantly, we proved to them that the plan now, the intercept that needs to be built, costs the $44 million, which is money we do not have. But we'll take this, the water from Eighth Street in this separation, and I'll land, correct me if I'm wrong, you're taking this water and it's going to be treated. It is not going to go into the Ohio. That reduces the volume of water going in the interceptor, reduces the size of that pipe, reduces the cost, gives us a plan that we can afford without raising rates, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's what we're.
City of Jeffersonville flows from 10th Street to the river. And consequently, we have to intercept this water that's making its way all the way to Market Street because we can't handle it in Market Street. That's why we're planning this up Chestnut Street and up Wall and Eighth, et cetera. Because we can't, we've got to intercept this water and keep it from going in the Ohio River.
So just, just in an effort to keep the conversation moving forward, I appreciate Councilman White's comments. Are there any other council members that have any comments related to what's been discussed so far? Do you feel, Councilman White, do you feel that you, your voice is, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll just.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve 2018 OR 50 on the first and second.
With the amendment, right?
With the amendment of the fifth line item being 1 million, not 1.5 million.
Second.
Sorry.
Okay, got a motion, a second, to approve 2018 OR 50 on the first and the second with amending the line to 1 million on the last time Eighth Street Stormwater Separation Project Improvement. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Lynn and Dale, thank you. I know we've looked at this upside down and sideways, but I appreciate all y'all's work. Lynn, thank you. Okay. We'll move on to department heads. I've got Nathan Pruitt, and then I'll have, I think Les and Heather want to speak to during department heads. Nathan?
Hi. Good evening, council. You haven't seen me in a while, but I've certainly been busy. Excuse me, I'm still getting over a sinus infection. Wanted to make an announcement tonight and give you a moment just to say anything if you felt necessary. I'm going to pass something out, please don't open it. We're going to have a bit of suspense moment here. Don't open this until I, I get back to the podium.
Oh, wow. Theatrics, I like it.
Yeah, a little bit of excitement tonight.
Dramatizing your ideas, I appreciate it.
Wait, right?
Yes, so wait to open it.
Yes, please wait. Wait for just a minute. So everybody has.
Suspense fills. It feels important. Feel the importance.
It's really high-grade copy paper.
Yeah, it's slightly.
It's a little limp from the air, the moisture issue we have. Sorry, I couldn't make that a little more official.
No.
Okay, so you can go ahead and open it. The announcement is that I've been admitted to an executive level Masters of Business Administration program at the University of Louisville and University of Kentucky. This comes with the efforts of, obviously not just myself pursuing it, but the mayor has been in support of this and it's helped for training for the city. I think the council has had a longstanding commitment to fund training budgets through various city departments, which is really exciting for staff to, to increase their skillset and provide services to the city. I know my employees take advantage of that, I have in the past. I also want to give a shout out to Kim Calabro. She helped me negotiate a, a College of Business scholarship, actually, that's helping to fund this program for me. So she really helped me get through that negotiation, used her great expertise in HR, and I want to thank her. And the last thing is, I'm sure you know Paul Wheatley. He's been a great person to reach out to whenever I'm talking about economic development as well as city planning and just kind of pick his brain for different things as, as I'm working on 10th Street and Court Avenue and things like that. He was gracious enough to give me a recommendation letter. He's a former city employee from, from several years back and he works as a consultant now. So anyway, this is not a small effort. This took many people helping out and, and helping me along here. So I just want to give you a little bit of information about the program and the reason why I'm here. It's the class of 2020, so it's a 20-month program. It has 15 students. They are B and C level executives. You have to have five to seven years of experience to be admitted to the program. They also make sure it's a wide diversity of sectors, so there's both government, nonprofit, and business executives in there as well. It's ranked 28th globally, which is pretty impressive when you're looking at a global business schools. That includes European, Latin American, other countries' business schools as well. So it's, it's a very great program with lots of great professors and clout there and a lot of knowledge. So that's good. The reason I'm coming to you tonight is because I do have a training budget and I'm electing to not go to some of the conference materials that I usually go to with the conferences. In lieu of that, I would like to use those funds towards basically my education and skillset, improving my skillset and using that hands-on here at the city. So that is in essence why I'm here tonight. I just want to be very transparent with you so that if a claim comes to you, you feel comfortable about it, you know what it is. Like I said, this is a 20-month program and I did get that scholarship, which is helping out a lot. So with that, if you have any questions, please let me know. And that's about it. More thoughts?
Are you going to be transparent about your grades, too? I feel like.
Yeah.
I'm writing a paper, do you love this? Good on you.
Yeah, so I will have to be transparent about my grades because to maintain my College of Business scholarship, I have to maintain a 3.0.
3.0.
So I will not be slacking on that, for sure. I'm not giving that up.
Well, I've heard fantastic things about this program. If I remember correctly, it's a weekend program, very intensive, and you alternate between UK and U of L schools.
Yes, that is correct.
Wow. I won't ask if you have a preference.
Yeah, don't.
Don't answer that.
Yeah, don't answer that.
But, but congratulations and I look forward to learning from your learning, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations.
It's a lot.
Les and Heather, did you, I don't know, both, one, Ellen?
It's that time of the year, budget time.
Already?
We've tried to simplify this as much as possible.
We never got our budget sheets. All right. Can I ask a question? Shouldn't the clerk and the council be able to go through their budget? Why didn't we get a budget worksheet?
I don't know. I don't, I don't, to the council budget or the clerk's budget, so it's not mine.
Can I, can I have the question answered? Why my budget sheets? Why we weren't given budget sheets?
They're in there, so.
No, no, I mean, we usually do our own budgets. I mean, the council and the clerk's office, all the years I've been involved, have done their own budgets.
They just rejected it. That's not true.
Exactly. Well, where does, you always got that budget worksheet and we went through our additionals and all that stuff and we always did it and turned that in, so. So I am requesting a budget worksheet for the clerk's office. And for the council.
And for the council.
Just real quickly, I know this is a lot of digest, I just wanted.
Were you asking for this, or were you asking?
Pardon me?
Am I sure, what did you ask for?
She, she, she needs her budget worksheet so she can.
Yeah, because what they have presented to you is not what we have worked on. This is the first time I've seen this and this has never been this way before. And statutorily, I am supposed to do my own budget.
We're not doing the council, we have not done the council's budget, we've not done the clerk's budget. The council and the clerk still need to do their budget. This is just reflecting the various department budgets.
It's in here.
But we, we did not make any changes. We didn't add anything, we didn't do anything. It still needs to be done by the council and the clerk's office. Now, I don't know why you didn't get the form, I don't know, but we have not touched the council budget or the clerk's budget.
You're saying no changes?
No changes.
Insurance.
Well, except health insurance, which I'll explain here in just a minute because we're going to need more money in health insurance. The bottom line is, based on Heather's estimates for next year in the general fund, there's going to be a little over $1.2 million of new revenue. So we did not even give the department heads their worksheets to submit their budget because at the end of the day, there's only $1.2 million of new money that's out there. And there's no sense in us sitting with department heads and telling them, "No, no, no," because there's only so much money out there. Because assuming that we budget for a pay raise for the employees at 3%, that is $116,126. Also, this budget moves the pay raises or the performance-based pay into the mayor's budget. I know there were some concern issues regarding that last year, so that'll be controlled by, by the mayor as opposed to the individual department, yes, department heads. Health insurance, again, we never know where, where health insurance should be, but we felt that it needed to be increased based on the claims and claims that we foresee coming in with certain employees. So the increase is of $425,000, also a workers' comp increase of $40,000. Again, that's in the council budget, but we can't very well prepare the other budgets until we know, we had to put a number in there for health insurance and workers' comp. Obviously, the council thinks it needs to be more or less, that's the council's prerogative. Planning the zoning, again, this has been an issue in the past and it's not made it necessarily to the council or was removed by the council. Planning the zoning is really the only department in, in the city offices that does not have an administrative assistant. This would create administrative assistance for planning and zoning. Then we do, we do a fuel transfer from, from vehicle maintenance that gives us some, some additional revenue. The green circle employees, I will let Heather, this is, that's an HR issue.
Those are the ones bringing up to the minimum of the, of the salary raise sheet you just approved.
And then there is the $30,000, $30,109 to address the internal equity employees. And may, correct me if I'm, it's my understanding, I was not involved in this, my understanding is that when the, when the pay grades were shifted or when the new pay grades were adopted, certain positions were.
Adjusted.
Adjusted, adjusted. So what we are trying to do is for certain individuals would be getting an equity adjustment because the new pay grades, they're much lower than where they would be if they had all their experience. Does that make sense? Potentially, you could have someone being hired in under the supervisor, making less than a supervisor.
So this is, addresses what?
So what we are trying to do is for certain individuals would be getting an equity adjustment because the new pay grades, they're much lower than where they would be if they had all their experience. Does that make sense? Potentially, you could have someone being hired in under the supervisor, making less than a supervisor.
So this is, addresses what in HR world is called compression? So when you have, when you bump up your minimum, then you have people of different experience levels that could be making the same and can cause issues, which we call compression. The 31-7 and the 3109 was what we approved and what we expected. This is just seeing it broken down into the different categories. So this is based on the recommendation from Liz, our consultant, and it's not, they're not new numbers. This is what the council approved.
And it's not all of the equity also.
We couldn't, there was no way we could afford to do all of the equity.
We only addressed it.
Cost per... And it's spread around, that's the portion that's in general fund. It's spread around among the other funds based on the pay that is for those employees for those different departments and those funds. And then finally, the request, the budget proposal or the request from administration is about 58% of that $1.2 million to be spent on public safety with six new firefighters funded for six months next year, starting in July, at $431,877, and then three new police officers for the entire year at $268,565. Again, you know, we are, it's a challenge. As you all know, we've been, we tried to work with River Ridge to get assistance from River Ridge as a way to help fund the additional fire protection that is necessary in the east end of the city, specifically in the River Ridge area. You know, we still are going to try to work with River Ridge. I know there's also some efforts in the, hopefully in the legislature to address the issue. But the bottom line is, is that the fire administration is trying to address the issue within the confines of our financial situation. And both, the fire chief supports this request. It's a step in that direction. I'll be honest with you, I don't think we're ever going to be able to get to where we need, need under the current situation without some assistance from River Ridge or some other changes because if it goes to get to 12, it's going to take us a while to get to 12 based on the finances that we have. But add six more for next year. Also, the police chief supports this request as well. We're not dipping into any reserves. And if you look at the total budgets for police and fire, if you include Lloyd, you know, police is at $10.3 million. That's an increase of about 3.76%. And then fire is at $9.2 million, which is at 5.87%. Would like to point out that there have not, have not been any new firefighters hired or any additional firefighters for the city since the last was in 2016. And if you go to the bottom, this just sort of gives you, I think this is in, I think you all have this, but this gives you just to highlight the other significant changes to the other funds, which are, that are not general fund. For example, under motor vehicles, there's $400,000 in there to help fund, paint a truck, also a chipper truck and a sweeper. And then we've increased our budget for paving for next year, an increase of $120,000. That's combined over those three different funds. The other changes are not very significant.
But just wanted to note then that these are the only changes.
Only changes. Basically, basically, the departments are going to be, they're living under this, they're living under the same budget that they are living under this year, except for these changes.
So this is everything on the one page?
This is every, the only changes.
Yes.
Wes, I had a question. I think you said, I just wanted to clarify. You said the fire chief was okay splitting six months before he gets the six officers?
Yes.
Because there wasn't a understanding that they were going to get six when the police officers got six two years ago, and we never fulfilled that promise. So as long as he's good with that, I thought, I thought you said...
He's supportive of this request, the six and three.
So there was a question as to how we were going to accomplish, you know, living up to that gentleman's agreement, sorry, you know, for the fire department to get their six employees, you know, that we talked about in the past, kind of informally. And I think splitting the calendar year and holding off on hiring is a really out-of-the-box way of thinking about how to fund that. And I think it's necessary. We need to be able to push the staffing in the fire department in order to have that extra apparatus out of station four. This is only going to get us halfway there, but it's absolutely necessary as a responder in that area of the city. I think we need that, those guys need that extra apparatus, so.
Am I correct then in saying that the next year we'll have to find an additional $430,000 for the other six months of that year?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I'm thinking of that correctly.
Yep.
The other sheet, it doesn't show up very well on there. It just gives you a summary of each different fund at the very, on the very far right. That is, shows you that we are revenue neutral. For example, the general fund, we actually would end with an additional $16,706 in the bank. All of them are either a net zero or a positive. There is the law enforcement, continuing education fund, but that's like a non-reverting fund, so we'll just have to spend less money out of that going forward next year. So, yeah, we did not meet with the, we didn't, you know, it was just no sense in, I mean, once she ran the number, we only got $1.2 million of additional money out there. It was no sense in having the departments put together this list that we can't fund.
Wes, what does it mean on this sheet where you have shift from general to edit for police, shift from general to edit for fire?
That was some of, some of the supplies and services were shifted from the general fund to the edit fund, so it was able to increase for the new hires.
What, did you have in there, well, you didn't, I guess you didn't change it, but that additional coming out of edit, do we, what did you budget for? Is it still $500,000 for sidewalks that we usually give Andy out of edit? Okay, all right.
We can go through all of that. It's, this is just a quick overview.
Usually they don't change.
Sorry, I have a question. Sorry. On your one sheet, you've got the new planning and zoning administrator at 42.5, and the budget, it's just under $35,000.
Right, because social security and...
Got you. Thank you. I knew you'd know. Is Lloyd maxed out in this budget?
Uh, on the...
Because we start with county restrictions now, right? With our Lloyd?
It's budgeting all of the revenues that's assumed for next year, and it's still conservative based on their projections of the income taxes to come in.
And are we handling the circuit breakers the same way? Will you take it right?
I recognize that this is a summary of the changes. I do want to ask a question, so significant changes to the budget, so did we look at our actuals or what are, were trending and decrease where is needed and increase, I mean, based on what we're spending? Because I know several times we have...
For the departments, you mean?
Yeah.
No.
I mean, we did just do an additional appropriation for the water bill.
Yeah.
That seems ludicrous to me, but, I mean, it's a thousand dollars, I mean, but...
I just know that we have fluctuations in what some of those things are, so I didn't know if you had...
So my thoughts are to have the public hearing on September 17th at your meeting, and then the adoption would be on October 1st. So to have all the paperwork and things done to get to the clerk's office, I would need to have all of that done by September 12th. So that kind of gives you a month to have your meetings or whatever your pleasure would be.
Good question for you, Heather. We talked before about how difficult it is to really pin a number on the revenue side because of the way things work. Did you, are you using, but you've done a good job of that. Has the methodology changed at all this time, or did you base that the same way you did last time? We're doing it the same?
Yes, the revenues are also in that book, so I just kind of based it on what we've been doing as a trend. And they are conservatively estimated, and they are an estimate, so.
Real quick, Heather, I see on here where it says the internal equity for employees for motor vehicles, the $7,109, is there nothing for sanitation, or is that including?
Sanitation's down or lower.
Oh, I didn't see it. Okay.
Out in the middle.
Where is that?
It's there.
Okay. And then for parks, I didn't think we did a big thing for an equity for that. It's $35,855? I didn't know we did this change in that. I knew we were addressing sanitation and motor vehicle, moving that up, but, okay.
They were included in the pay grades two and three that we adjusted, so I assume that they're, I think there was a largest number of employees coming from parks and from sanitation that were going to be impacted by that change. If I'm not mistaken.
And looking at the variances of where you should be in the pay scale, these are only addressing the ones that are 19% off and more. There are some that are close to 70% off of where they should be. So these are not addressing everyone. It would be twice as much, if not more, if we addressed everyone. So that's, and it's just doing the math on this. It's taking the employee that's in that particular pay job or, you know, that job title for however many years they are in that title. It's not looking at any other factors that's not mathematical, I guess. So if the person had experience or any of that, that's not taking an effect of any of this. It's just, just the data.
Okay. And I want to make sure I got the dates correct.
Yes.
You said you want the public hearing on September?
September 17th.
Public hearing and then adoption October 1st?
Yes.
Let me get back to you on that before we nail that down. If we nail that down by next council meeting, will that be okay?
Yeah.
It's only because we weren't expecting this tonight.
Sure.
So we get a chance to kind of look at, and I think if we can, I mean, everything's filled out on that. I don't know if we need to, you already adjusted health, so we just need to look at the clerk's and the council's budget to see where we fit in all of this.
Is that a 10% on the health? What are we doing? What was percentage on?
I don't know percentage. I just, I don't know if it's much of a good...
Did, Wes, Heather?
Yeah, you're all right.
Just for clarification for me, the significant changes are from last year's budget or the changes, the additional appropriations that we made up before tonight? Which one did you use?
I used the amended budget as of June 30. So it would include any of the additional appropriations. Of course, not, not some of the other, the miscellaneous surplus ones, the one timers. None of that was included.
Thank you.
Along those lines, if the, after circuit breakers come, time of June, we find that we had more than we expected, like we did this year, would the administration consider hiring 12 firemen? Or that we have a fully adequately-staffed firehouse in District 6? Turns out we have that kind of funds?
I can't answer that. I don't know the answer to that.
Instead of three for the whole year?
Okay.
One budget at a time, that's the line.
You don't want to think about June of next year?
Love it.
Until after 1st.
You want it to be the first climate. Nobody has any more questions. We will, we have fireworks ordinances.
We do.
Thank you all.
Wes, thank you for, and thank you, Heather, for the work you put into it.
Thank you.
So you all should have received in your packet. We're going to get there.
He wants to see what we're leaning towards. They haven't prepared.
You have it in, yeah, can you roll it up there?
Yeah, I mean, you're human.
Appreciate it. We're going to roll it. And just go one, just go to the very next page. So essentially, what you were provided were two fireworks ordinances. That one's good. And they are essentially ordinances that were developed based upon the Indiana Code, which Indiana Code provides that you can actually discharge fireworks every day of the year. The city in 2007 chose to limit that timeframe to those dates that you see in Section 1, the 28th, 29th, 30th of June, 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th of July, New Year's Eve, over into New Year's Day, beginning at 10:00 a.m. on December 31st, ending at 1:00 a.m. on January 1st. So that proposal ends the fireworks displays in the city of Jeffersonville, with the exception of those that are, with the exception of Thunder over Louisville, obviously, at 10:00 p.m. a time certain. And the only thing it changes is the amount of the penalty if someone were to violate the ordinance. And if you can see now, if you do, if you violate the ordinance within a 12-month period one time, it's not less than $250. If you violate the ordinance a second time within a 12-month period, it is not more than $500. And if you violate the ordinance for a third time, it would be not to exceed the maximum of $2,500. So that dramatically changes the penalties for violating your fireworks ordinance. So if you go to the next, the next ordinance in the package and stop, and just go to the timeframe page, come back down. So what that ordinance there reflects is essentially the ordinance that you have now, which was two hours after sunset on those same days and ending on New Year's Eve, New Year's Day at the same time. I think what it's important for everybody to understand is that the two hours after sunset would actually mean that on June 28th, 29th, and 30th of this year, fireworks could be discharged up till 11:10 p.m. On the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th, 6th, and 7th of July, up to 11:09 p.m. And then on the 8th and 9th, up to 11:08. So in other words, two years, two hours after sunset means about an hour longer than if you cut them off at 10:00 p.m. And then that ordinance maintains the same amount of penalties for the violations. Then the third option, I didn't prepare because it would simply be you adopt an option that says no fireworks shall be discharged in City Jeffersonville. And you can do that as well. So those are your three options. Or you can tell me that you want it to be something different than that, and I will do what you tell me.
I know we had requests of someone, you said you would allow to speak during...
I have no problem yielding, if the council's okay with it, this fine young lady who spoke the last time about her concerns, and now that you've heard what the ordinance proposals are...
Is it the same number of days?
Correct. The same number of days as the last one. I didn't have anybody tell me they wanted to limit the days.
Let me briefly address the days, because I remember when we had this discussion way back then, I was here at that time, believe it or not.
2007.
Yeah. And the thought was, okay, what if 4th July falls in the middle of the week?
Correct.
People will probably want to, some people will shoot off fireworks the weekend before, and some people, you know, probably do it after. So that's why we did it that way. It just happened to work out this year that it was on Wednesday, so you did have two weekends worth of fireworks. But I don't think that that's always the case. But that was at least the mindset back then, why there was that many days. Just wanted to share that with you.
So if you all have no objection, I've got no objection to whether or not we talked during that time. Three minutes.
Three minutes, thank you.
Make sure, name and address for the record, please.
Jill Parish, 1233 Ridgeway Drive. And we have fireworks, a competition on our North Haven website, starting last weekend between two guys still firing off fireworks at 10:55 p.m. We all know the saying, one bad apple can spoil the whole bunch. We all have a few bad apples with no compassion or common sense for fireworks. Or do they even care how they affect the lives of the whole neighborhood and the city? Their wants to blow things up should not outweigh... I pity our citizens, young and old alike, and their pets who are startled and scared by the constant booms and noises. Would be acceptable if I set off air horns or beat and clang symbols in the name of celebrating the Fourth of July holiday. It's called common sense or lack thereof. Seat belts were enacted December the 1st, 1984. Until then, I didn't use the seat belt because it took time away from my always-on-go lifestyle. I even grew up riding in cars that didn't even have seat belts. But today, I buckle up every time I get in the car. Do you know why? Because I don't want my hard-earned money to go for paying for a fine. Maybe those who choose to keep a whole neighborhood up with noise would, would rather not pay a fine. If not, I can tell the police their house numbers because their neighbors also hate the noise. So tonight, please amend this ordinance to weekends of the Fourth. I'm not saying don't do fireworks, only that we have peace and quiet in our homes for the many who have to get up way too early to go to work the next day and relieve from medicating our pets due to the noise. Many have taken their time to reach out to the council members about this problem affecting their lives in a negative way. Please help the needs of the many over the wants of a few. This past week and weeks since the Fourth of July, we have guys setting off loud booming rockets at 10:55 p.m. thinking they are getting around the noise ordinance in the middle of our large neighborhood of North Haven. It is getting worse. We need your help. And we need the police to be told that fireworks are not acceptable at 10:55 or 11:55 every day of the year. It's not acceptable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So actually, what they're doing is.
Illegal.
They're violating their subject to find out. So, so that's kind of your, your options, folks. And whatever you want to do, I will do.
I was a council of one.
If you were a council.
If I were a council, if I were king.
King of the forest.
I will think about it.
I was.
I mean, I, I'm fully for people being able to express their, whatever patriotism they may have. But I think when these ordinances were written as well, fireworks ain't quite what they used to be. The fireworks now, and I'm pro-firework, but they shake the ground sometimes. If I were putting this together myself, I would throw out that we consider putting not the two hours after sunset, but limiting it time, and I would say 10 o'clock, except on Fourth of July, which would be 11. And I would like to put forward the idea of saying just on the weekend, the Friday and Saturday before and after, and July 4th. So if the Fourth of July is on a Thursday, you'd have the Friday and Saturday before that Thursday, and then the Friday and Saturday after. Now, not everybody is off on the weekends, like some of us are fortunate to be, but that would greatly reduce the strain on people who are disturbed by the fireworks. So I'm not a council of one, but that is what, if I were getting to choose myself, that's what I would do for.
I would support something to that manner, but I don't think we could ever get this right 100% next year. Fourth of July is on a Tuesday. Some agencies might give their people off Monday, Tuesday. They're not going to be allowed to shoot off fireworks on Monday, but they would be able to shoot them off on Tuesday, which everybody's going to work again on Wednesday, maybe possibly. It's a very hard ordinance to target when you, when you're doing date specific, in my opinion. Next year, I could see, like I just said, people wanting to shoot them off on Monday, but what you just proposed, it would not be allowed.
I was around when the closest place you could get fireworks was Tennessee. And they were illegal here in the state of Indiana. Well, I just happened to grow up around a grandfather that was a bootlegger. So my grandfather would go to Tennessee and bring fireworks back and sell them. They shot fireworks whenever they wanted to, like they do now. If the police were fortunate enough to catch someone, they'd get a fine. I saw a couple of times that my grandfather was locked up for bootlegging. But I don't think that whatever ordinance that we come up with is going to have much of an impact on the people that really want to shoot fireworks. What I'd like to see somebody do is figure out how they can stop the noise out at the sports drone so I could sleep sometimes. But.
Got to invade Clarksville with that, right?
Maybe put a wall, you know? But, you know?
Did I just hear build a wall? Are we going to make them pay for it?
I heard you say build a wall.
But I, you know, I understand, I live across from Thomas Jefferson School. And they got that big field there. And I probably hear as much fireworks as anybody because there, a number of times they're over there shooting off fireworks. And I think probably as much as anything, it's an enforcement problem and not, you can, you could write all the laws you want, but if they're not enforced, what goods are going to do?
So just to, to piggyback off of Councilman Ellis's point, it's a very similar point that I was going to make. I think it's unfortunate that we can't adjust the motivation of others, and I wish that we could. What I am hearing is something that we can do something about, is that there is confusion with our police department about when is an appropriate time to cut it off? And our, our ordinance might not be, currently might not be as crystal clear as we would like. And so I support this cutting it off at 10:00 p.m. I think there's no question about if it's within the scope or without the scope. I do agree with the reasoning that Mr. Sisovny had mentioned. I think that, I personally have a lot of friends that work weird hours and work different days of the week. And I feel that including weekdays within this duration is acceptable. But I do think that we can be more clear for our police officers in hopes that that leads to better enforcement of, of our current policy.
I kind of agree with that. I think, yeah. Kind of what Councilperson Maples had stated, if we, I know there was a question, I know a lot of the phone calls and emails and stuff that I received was to shorten the, the dates, which of course, you know, we can only do a perimeter. We can't control it and it's being enforced by the police department. But what if the, the weekend before and after, and then depending on what times, days they have off, due to July 4th and 5th?
Just to comment, kind of like what Ron said, Gail just said a while ago, they're firing them off last night. And that's against, totally against our ordinance. And so reality is, whatever we change it to, they're still going to do it outside the ordinance. And so I don't know.
Well, and at least if they're called and the police, we do have the time specificed on here that'll aid our police officers. Plus, we'll have the fines declared, you know, right here where the police officer can use their discretion and.
Just, just so I'm clear. So if I were supposedly mounting, you know, a case against a neighbor that is very clearly in violation of our ordinance, what would be appropriate evidence that I could supply to where a police officer could arrive after they've shot off? Would it be a video?
Video is the best evidence, unless it's bad for my client, then it's terrible.
So I mean, I, I think that however we can supply the best evidence, we know it's happening, we hear it, that it's clearly in violation, that gives our police officers some, something to, to use and hopefully.
Larry, your local ordinance would fall under preponderance of evidence.
Correct. It would be, it's civil, it's all civil. There are some criminal statutes that the state has, but, so it makes it a lot easier.
Easily. What, what if we ask chief his opinion? If, if we change this, can it be enforced? Will you enforce it? Whatever.
I, I, well, I didn't talk to the chief. I was referred to the assistant chief. He, I sent an email and the assistant chief was told by chief to contact me, which he did, and which he expressed the, the amount of days, whatever we want to do, they, they support in that because they get calls. He said they'll do it way before, way after, they'll do it, but they specifically wanted us to define because that was the issue that they had, where we had.
Sunset.
Sunset. And that's where you're standing there arguing, and they don't want to spoil anybody's time, but they're arguing with the, what time sunset it is. So he said if we clarified that, that would help them tremendously. And that's basically all that he told me, so.
Okay. Larry, can we require the fireworks store to hand out a copy of the ordinance? Make them sign it?
Or have it posted on their doors? We, I don't know if we could force them, but we could. I think that we could have flyers made that, and try to incentivize.
I would like to.
Everybody's aware.
We can put it in the next business letter.
No one.
I would like, I'll look and see about requiring them to post.
I mean, I don't want to force businesses, but I think that we can, at least make it available to where the flyer is distributed more publicly, where, yeah, I know we had, I saw it was shared on Facebook quite a bit. I think that information is important, especially if there's fines attached to it. But.
Well, and to address that, I mean, I, I mean, I know that every ordinance or law that's passed reduces one's liberty by definition, and I'm against that. But, you know, our noise ordinance really isn't worth, I've went round and round with people about the noise ordinance. But it is a, at least a statement of the city of what acceptable behavior is. So I, I get the idea that, you know, really, no matter what we're going to do, people are still going to be jerks. I mean, you can't necessarily be nice to your neighbor. But that's why I, I lean towards wanting to really hem this down. That's just my opinion. That course wasn't quite there yet. Trying to keep it on the top.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing, it sounds like council is fine with the 10:00 p.m. We just need to decide if we want to shorten the days or not, which kind of took the medium of what I was hearing. Allow the, the weekends before and after, and then like Councilperson Maple said, you don't know what day they get off, go ahead and say the, the third, fourth, and fifth of July. Does, does that sound like a good?
Just the third, fourth, and fifth, or the weekend before, weekend after?
Weekend before, the weekend after, and then the third, fourth, and fifth. But on the fourth, they have until midnight, but the other days are still 10.
That sounds awfully complicated when it's an ordinance that people might already have confusion about, you know? I mean, if our issue is, is information about it, and this is, this is not for your statement directly, I just feel, you know, because I'm sitting here thinking, okay, all right, Fourth of July is a Tuesday, so what, you know, and I, and I am someone that is aware of what the ordinance could be. And I'm just thinking that there might even be more confusion about weekend before, weekend after, and then these dates, and then.
So better, yes.
No matter what. I don't know, that's just.
So I think what happened, I think.
The same discussion we had.
Yeah.
Exact same discussion we had. That's why we set the actual dates before that.
Well, I just think the weekend before, the after, those three date were, the public has been saying shorten the days. So at least we would address that. We would address what dates they have off during the week, and how many, they have the time in the weekends, if they have to work through the week.
It doesn't get dark tonight. Build a wall.
I will make Clarksville pay for the wall, if you want to vote for the wall.
All the people who are filing them are not saying shorten the day.
So from a procedural standpoint.
The third, fourth, and fifth, and every other weekend, potentially could allow you have one day of relief in, in the week for fireworks. Like next year, it would be Thursday. It would be the only day of the week you would have a relief for that whole week. So.
And everyone will.
We can enact that if you, if the council wishes to do so, but that would be the reality of that ordinance. I think the best thing to go with is a hard time to finish, to give the police something very enforceable. And that's my opinion.
Well, if that's what we want to do, that's fine, but that one day of relief, I think there's 12 days.
12 days, yes.
That are currently, but you'd be cutting the amount of time almost in half by doing that. Like, even though you would only have one day of relief, you'd be.
That's what we want to do. Let's do it.
So let's move on. Is everybody, is everybody okay with the 10 o'clock?
Yes.
No.
Where are, I'm sorry, where are you getting the 12 days from?
From June 28th to July 9th is 12 days.
Like it is.
The way it is, there's 12.
We're enforcing.
But in this model, you would still have the two days for the weekend, the two days for the weekend after, and then three existing days. So that'd be seven days.
Correct. Potentially, depending on.
Depending on when that was. No, no more than seven days.
If July 4th landed on a weekend, you would only have potentially four days. Because that wouldn't take effect with it being in the week.
I see Ed's history head going, and you're just going to, you're remembering.
I recently had the same end of the year. All of those days? I hope not.
No, I'm, I'm. Because 10:00 p.m. is, is, you know, sunset is 9:00, 9:00 p.m. So we're talking about.
On New Year's Eve.
All right, everybody, after it's dark, you have an hour to shoot off all your.
We all read on 10 o'clock.
If it was, if it was only on weekends and on the fourth, you could spread it to 11 o'clock like it is now. It was on weekends and the fourth.
I don't think 11 is unreasonable or anything, but that's just me.
Maybe I'm a night owl, I don't know.
But I think on the third and fourth, I don't think midnight is unreasonable. But not to throw a wrench in everything that you all already agreed on, but there it is.
But you did.
So procedurally, I think then you need to probably, Les, jump in at any time, vote on what I've provided that has no changes, which I'm suspecting is going to be not supported. And then somebody needs to make an amendment to that and add the changes and see where that goes.
It sounds like each council person has a different idea of what they would like to.
I'm the only council person that received zero complaints. None this year.
I personally didn't receive any, but there was someone on the Facebook page for a neighborhood.
I've got them from.
I heard you've had two or three. Yeah, two, I guess, and I had zero.
I didn't get any personally, but there were, there were complaints posted on the Facebook page in a neighborhood group that is.
I've got all North Haven's complaints.
The Meadows, I got some of the Meadows.
Yeah, it sounds like there's just some issues.
I live in a neighborhood where it's primarily older people, and I don't have any complaints from them. Well, to me, the people over in the graveyard don't say nothing.
If the chief, if the chief said, one of the, or the assistant chief, who said they can't enforce it because of the sunset, at minimum, I think, allow them tools to, to enforce.
Cut off, yes.
And put a time. I would support leaving all the days, but put a time and see if they'll even enforce it. I'm not even sure if they'll enforce it because.
You wouldn't be able to shoot them off after sunset?
Well, then they, actually, if.
The time that Larry said, 10, which is dark, I mean, it's after dark. It's sometime, but sunset.
Sunset's 9:09, 51 minutes after the latest sunset.
State statute says the same thing. You can call Jeff Police, you can call county, or you can call state.
State statute says you can shoot off fireworks any day of the year.
Sure, every day.
What do you do with the fireworks? It's designed not to be shot until after dark, like your Roman candles you want to go up in the air and put them.
Yeah, then you're going to hear a whole lot of.
Then are you going to be able to put on those?
So I guess, so let me just make this observation. So.
We need a workshop.
My emails that I sent out about how, you know, I hate to try to, I hate to write these things without hearing what everybody has to say, because I think this is what everybody elected to do, is talk about what they want to do. So let me make this observation. This is not a, a rush to get anything done because you have an ordinance in place that prohibits the discharge of fireworks today. So, so you don't have to get something done today. Yes, ma'am?
Larry, don't give us that option.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
What happens if we, we, we don't actually really ever, and I'm part of this, I'm one ninth of this, but we keep the same opinions and we just keep talking about them over and over again. And so I would like to take some action tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can, can we do that?
Well, we don't have.
Yeah, you got an ordinance, you got them in front of you.
Or at least move forward with one ordinance in mind.
You can, you can, here's what I believe.
If we don't vote on it tonight, I'd like to have an ordinance in mind, yeah.
Oh, I didn't realize that was like.
Or at least move forward with one--
You can, here's what I believe--
If we don't vote on it tonight, I'd like to have an ordinance in mind, yeah. Oh, I didn't realize that was like--
Well, I would think that what you want to do is tell me what you want, and pass that on, and I'll bring it back to you the way, in the format you want it.
Which you really, really want.
Or just tell me what else you want on, how you--
I think everyone's leaning towards the one that states the five, the cutoff at 10:00 PM.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I--
When you want to change it.
I agree.
I'd suggest the 10:30.
He's narrow it down, he doesn't want to go by this one, where it says two hours after sunset. We got on what time to work from.
10:36 and 23 seconds.
You'll put one on, you'll put that one on--
So here's what I will provide for you for the next meeting. I will provide one ordinance that says that the fireworks shall be allowed the Friday through Saturday before the Fourth of July. Who wanted that? That was Scotty's recommendation. Mr. Hawkins?
The king. I--
I'll put one together that says that. I have one that says the dates, the 12 dates that are set out till 10:30.
Yeah.
Okay. Then we'll have the one that has 10. I'll leave midnight in all of them, and you all can decide at that point, midnight on July 4th or 11:00--
Can I just, can I just say that it seems like there's already kind of a consensus that--
Okay, come on in.
That the first option probably won't see much traction, right?
Correct.
Is anyone directly opposed to eliminating that option from the table?
Two hours after sunset's gone.
Gone, definitely.
Gotcha.
And then the weekend, it sounds like there's not a lot of traction for that either. Would anyone be opposed to removing that?
Removing the weekends?
The weekend before, weekend after, and the--
Weekend before, weekend after, and then a couple of days before.
Yeah, get rid of that one. So it'd only be weekend, weekend, and then the fourth and fifth, and--
Third, fourth, and fifth.
So then, so that then keeps our same day range.
12 days.
And it seems that our deliberation is more about 10:00 PM or 10:30 PM.
I think we agree on 10:30.
10:30 PM?
We?
No.
No?
Okay.
I don't even know anymore.
So, how about we have an ordinance that says 10:30, and then we can discuss a specific time on that, when we're voting on that ordinance?
Okay.
Fair?
Fair.
So just prepare one ordinance.
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Thank you.
And the fines are good?
Boom.
Fines are good?
Yes, yes.
The first, there were two different fine structures, so, you know, one was up to not more than $2,500.
That's the max at the end.
One was not more than $1,000.
No, no, not more than 500.
250, 500.
250, first offense goes 250, second offense, not more than 500. So the range is 250 to 500. If you're on the third, it's not more than, not to exceed 2,500. So it leaves the latitude, it's going to start baseline's 250.
Not less than 250?
Not less than 250, that's baseline.
Right, first offense.
First offense.
That seems excessive.
They won't do it again, they won't violate it again, will they?
They should make the stores hand them out, hand the order--
What do you want to start with, 100?
I just think not more than 250.
Okay, so change that to not more than.
Or allow them to be tased.
Their choice.
Fireworks are confiscated. We're taking the fireworks.
So, Mr.--
So we're saying, we're saying up to--
250.
Up to 250.
So it came out of not more than 250.
Yes.
Zero to 250.
Yes.
And then 250 to 500.
That's your problem.
It says not more than 500.
Not more than 500.
And then not more, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
10:30.
10:30, same date ranges.
Midnight or 11 on July 4th.
Midnight.
Midnight.
I'm not speaking for everyone, there's an objection, okay?
All right.
I'm just in a--
I'll prepare, it'll be on.
Thank you, Larry.
You're welcome. Isn't this fine?
All right, do we have any public comment?
Wait, what? I'm sorry, what?
Okay, then we'll move on to council comments. Councilperson White. Councilperson Astani.
No comment.
Councilperson Yon.
I do have one comment.
Sorry.
Oh, it was not about the other comment. Okay, I was like, I usually make comments, man, I mean-- I actually did want to mention Councilman White in my comments, so I just want to say that I know what it's like being the lone vote, and I appreciate you voicing your opinion and standing for what you feel is right, it doesn't go unnoticed. That's it.
Councilperson Maples.
No comment.
Councilperson Hawkins.
I'm glad that the administration, the number one rule that I came in here with was that I would not go for or help push along any budget that wasn't conservative and balanced in nature, and I'm glad so far, it looks like, we may have to argue about a couple of things, but it looks like we'll be three for three. So I'm glad about that.
Councilperson Ellen.
Okay.
Councilperson Ellis.
Couple of things. The budget means nothing if we don't get a handle on additional appropriations. What's the purpose of the budget process? What's the purpose of us wasting all that time to going over budgets and everything, and then when someone from one of the departments decides, well, we don't have enough money to spend, we want to keep this money over here, so let's just go to the council and get additional appropriations? Unless the council is willing to stand firm and cut out some of those additional appropriations, we'll always be jumping back and forth for this and for that. Kelly, I'm often the only one that votes no on anything, and I don't have a problem on it, because I'm standing by the values that I have. And the value is to be as conservative as I possibly can when it comes to taxpayer money.